City Council Business Session for Thursday, February 2 is now in session. We do have a quorum. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the business session of January 26, 2017. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion, deletions, changes, alterations? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of January 26, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There are no opposed. Minutes are approved. First item of business up is a discussion and presentation on the digital equity strategy of the city. And I want to say good afternoon to everybody who's here to present and everybody who's here to listen and all of our partners who may be here and participants. This is something that we've been working for, towards, for quite some time. We've taken some leadership in it, but we are by far not even close to being alone in this. I have to thank the Kansas City Coalition for digital inclusion, of which Kansas City, Missouri is one of the co-founding members. But the other co-founding members, KC Digital Drive, the Kansas City Public Library, Linwood YMCA, Connecting for Good, and other members of the coalition have taken the lead on this and done a huge amount of legwork. And I can't thank you enough. This is a really important issue. Examples of the type of work done include the digital upcycling program, free public Wi-Fi on the streetcar line, open data portal, participation in national health initiatives like Connect Home, uh, national initiatives, not health initiatives, like Connect Home and Tech Hire, all as a result of the coalition's work and strategies. We've shown a commitment to fostering inclusive and accessible digital society, and it's absolutely imperative that we continue to do so if we're going to bring everybody along. This is a strategy plan that will be presented, that our staff has put together with volunteer help from Echo Select, that will allow us to continue to push out our digital equity approaches. And later today, council, I plan to introduce a resolution to support this plan, and it addresses the digital divide. It charts pathways for us to become more digitally equitable in this city. It requires continued commitment of the council and the city manager's office with the coalition, as well as others in the city and around the nation who are interested in digital equity. We have to have a strategic approach to applying the resources that are available to us because there's really a lot of work to do. We want to make sure that all residents have access, affordable access to the Internet and devices that will allow them to access the Internet, and that they need to not only have access and equipment, but they need to have the skills to participate in a digital economy. We want to continue our partnerships with Surplus Exchange, donating surplus computer equipment through our digital upcycling program, which benefits people who need equipment in order to be able to participate in a full-fledged digital economy. So, with that being said, I'm going to introduce two people. I will start with the lady first, because she is, in fact, in my office. That would be McLean Bryant, who is my Director of Policy and has worked very hard on things digital, with Rick Usher, who is in the city manager's office and has been one of the driving forces in all of this. So, Rick and McLean, please.
Hi, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, Rick and I are here to brief you all on the city's digital equity strategic plan. You all have a copy of the plan in front of you. It contains information on the digital divide locally, as well as around the world. It also includes information on work that we've done in Kansas City, Missouri, to date on digital equity, policy priorities that staff and digital equity experts recommend that we focus on, recommended actions for advancing these policies, a draft resolution for adopting the plan, and then some additional resources that support the plan. This draft, as the mayor said, has been the result of collaborative effort, and we intend to take additional public input. And in the coming weeks, we intend to finalize the plan, which Rick will explain later. So, the first slide shows you that in Kansas City, Missouri, we have some of the fastest Internet in the world. Actually, is that?
That's the, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thanks to Google Fiber. Google Fiber's arrival in Kansas City really highlighted for us, though, that the city and has a pretty grave state of digital inequity. This next slide shows face-on income and council district Internet access. Like most cities, our rural areas and the urban core are the most impacted by the digital divide, but the digital divide exists all over the city. Statistics show that approximately 17% of Kansas Cityans are not online at all. 28% of those that are disconnected don't go online because they either cannot afford the Internet or devices to access the Internet. 41% of those without access say that they don't go online because it's not relevant to their lives, which is shocking, because I can't imagine living without the Internet. It's hard to apply for jobs, sign up for healthcare, keep in contact with loved ones without access to the Internet. This slide also shows just connectivity by council district, just so you can see how the digital divide is impacting your districts and the residents of our city. But what sets us apart from a lot of cities is the work that we have done to become more digitally equitable. Highlights include, we've co-founded the Coalition for Digital Inclusion, without which we wouldn't have made any of the headway we have made in the city. Highlights of some of the work that we've done today for digital inclusion include, we sponsored the inaugural NDIA National Digital Inclusion Summit. NDIA is an advocacy organization that brings together national partners to advocate for such things as, like, affordable Internet, extension of the Federal Communication Commission's Lifeline Program to include affordable broadband, net neutrality, which has been talked about on the federal and the national level to ensure that folks have free access and open access to the web. One thing that we've been working on for the last couple of years has been the Connect Home Initiative, which is a White House and HUD initiative aimed at connecting residents of public housing to broadband. HUD selected us because we had a pre-existing coalition in place that's been working really hard on these efforts. So, we were able to rally together really quickly and make a huge impact. We were able to connect 579 residents of public housing to either free or Internet at costs of $10 a month or below, which is really affordable. Through that program, we provided twice-a-week training on digital literacy skills, such as, you know, as simple as turning on and off a computer, online banking, how to fill out job applications online, complete homework assignments online, all things that folks that are impacted by the digital divide aren't able to do, which a lot of us take for granted. Another part of our participation in Connect Home was the creation of a program called the Digital Scholars Program. It was a partnership with the Full Employment Council, whereby the Full Employment Council provided funding to provide on-the-job training opportunities in tech for residents of public housing and others served by the Full Employment Council to work at some of our digital inclusion partner organizations to learn tech skills. One of our partners here, Surplus Exchange, actually hired two of these people on full-time. A second program that has come out of Connect Home is the Digital Upcycling Program. It's a partnership between the city and Surplus Exchange, whereby the city donates all of its surplus computer equipment for triaging, refurbishing, and then it makes it available for low-cost purchase at $55 a computer to residents of public housing, and also makes it available for other nonprofits to purchase as well. So, as you can tell, we have kind of haphazardly, but in a very intentional way, been doing our best to build digital equity within the city through these programs. But our goal here today is to outline a strategy for making a much more concerted effort in partnership with the coalition to have a greater impact in the community. So, if you'll cue the video, this is a short video that describes the digital upcycling program.
I have six children in the home, two of which are high school age, and a lot of their schoolwork has to be done on computers. They love having the Internet at home, especially when it's cold outside, so they don't have to go moving there. So, the grades have gone up. It's helped out a whole lot. It's, I mean, it's just much more convenient.
Through the Connect Home program, we offer the residents very low-cost computers, and we're able to do that from the donations that we receive from places like the city of Kansas City and other organizations.
What we're doing is we're taking material that was paid for with tax dollars. We're retrieving it, and a lot of the materials are made available to our most underprivileged folks in the city. A lot of this material will find itself into Connect Home programs, so it's going to be in public housing. You're touching on education. You're touching upon job education, job creation, job search. Health is being touched upon. People can do health research.
The city staff, I, and others have been working with a number of organizations, nonprofits, that are providing training for people to learn how to use computers and understand the relevance of the Internet. Digital inclusion is going to assist us in economic mobility. If people now can realize that they can use the Internet to not only be a consumer, but to pursue educational opportunities, we're looking at entrepreneurship, home-based business development. If we can show our residents how to not only become employed through online opportunities, but become job creators, the end goal is really economic mobility and growth of our neighborhoods.
So, there are three other cities in the nation that have adopted digital inclusion plans. We'll be the first with a plan that actually lays out action items and solutions for combating the digital divide. And so, Rick will go into some of those action items for you.
Sure. Thank you, McLean, and good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. The plan is, as is shown on this slide, defining the path from digital inclusion to economic mobility and entrepreneurship. The five points in the graphic, you know, take, reflect the priorities, pathways. So, the first is what's traditionally been known as the three-legged stool of digital inclusion. For most digital inclusion agencies are looking at connectivity, you know, providing Internet access at the home, providing a desktop PC or laptop, and then digital life skills training to allow residents to learn how to use that. But with today's Internet, we're well beyond that point, where, you know, kids are getting homework assignments they have to do online. And so, a lot of kids, as you've seen in the video, this woman's kids had to go to a community center or a library to go to do their homework. Now, they're able to do that homework at home by having that connectivity at home. Then, this third point, using the Internet to promote civic responsibility. This is where we get feedback, and on this plan, we have a posting right now on my sidewalk, our KC Momentum site, asking for feedback on these six priorities. We've had some conversations started through that digital platform. And then, next door is another tool that we use through city communications to communicate with our residents, and 3-1-1, of course. So, all of our services are going online. We want to be able to access more of our residents and have the residents access City Hall through this environment. Fourth point is employment. So, rather than just typically using the Internet, maybe to apply for a job or find a job, there are distance working and remote, formerly known as, like, teleworking opportunities, where you can work from home. With high-speed Internet connectivity, there are thousands of companies that would employ people to work at home. So, that really we're at a point where geography doesn't matter, so why not, you know, at your house, anywhere within the city? Fifth point is business and job creation. And there are, you know, studies that show that as Internet speeds increase, then the number of home-based businesses, the number, again, work-from-home opportunities increase, and so does the revenue and impact and growth of those businesses. And, you know, we're all aware of the startup village phenomenon, where small companies, startups are working out of homes that have high-speed Internet connections, and now we have businesses, you know, doing the same thing. So, the sixth item here is collaboration to promote digital equity priorities. This, I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, you'll appreciate that, you know, cities share ideas, cities collaborate. There's no, there's transparency. There is transparency between cities. So, we're sharing. McLean pointed out the National Digital Inclusion Alliance. That's a network that today has monthly phone calls that, you know, cities get involved in to share ideas. And then, they had their inaugural summit here. The next summit this year is coming up in Minneapolis, so we're looking at sending a Kansas City contingent there. But Next Century Cities, there's just a number of organizations that we're sharing and collaborating with. So, the plan, you know, outlines how we continue that. And our coalition, I can't, I think we've got, I don't know, 20, 30 people here that are members of the coalition, including Internet service providers and service providers to residents. So, the next steps to the plan, so as you discussed, you'll be introducing a resolution this afternoon. We've got the priorities out for comment on KC Momentum. We'll be collecting those comments for the next few weeks. We'll continue to collaborate with the coalition on the draft that we prepared. And I've highlighted UMK School of Law here, that Provost Barbara Bickelmeier has become very active with the coalition. Michael Robach with UMKC is here today, but they're looking at finding more ways across the university to cooperate with this effort. And then, we're scheduling four public engagement sessions over the next
Two weeks.
Two weeks or so, to talk with residents one-on-one, knowing that, you know, this isn't something we can only do online. We're talking about bringing people online, but we need to have the face-to-face meetings and hear people's comments and suggestions, and then it'll be heard in the Neighborhood and Public Safety Committee here toward the end of the month. And that was the last slide we had there. So, do we want to go through the list of coalition members, or we can, we'd go for your questions, yeah?
Yeah, let's go to questions, if there are any. Questions from council? Councilman Reed?
More of a comment, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Rick Usher and McLean Bryant for their presentation, and also applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership in this area. There's so many people, as has been pointed out during this presentation, that don't have access to Internet. And I think one of the biggest things that I recall back in my first term was when Google, of course, made their announcement here in Kansas City and how excited we were, and really sort of tried to push to make sure that everyone had access to the Google service that was going to be provided. But then, more importantly, we had, what was it, the KC Digital Drive, and even, I believe my peers on the council now, you know, they hosted one of their, our campaign, what else, debates, or, we really didn't have a debate. I'll leave that alone.
Form, yes, 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 thank you.
Somebody's paying attention. So, but yeah, I mean, it was the importance of making sure that this was a top priority, and I think that all the work that has taken place over the past several years, from the White House, Digital Inclusion Summits, the Connect Home, PSL Gateway, all of those things really, really help. But I think it also stems to another level, because this showcases, you know, broadband and the work that the city and trying to bring all of our partners together. But I want to talk about it from a personal standpoint, and that is at my church, Victorious Life Church. Every month, we adopt a student, and we are giving them a tablet and providing them with Internet access as well. This past Christmas, we gave not only probably about 150 bikes away during our Christmas Day service, but we also gave away about 20 tablets to many of the students in our church. And so, I talk about it from that angle, just at churches, because this is great from a local and state and national level, what we're doing, but all of our areas in this community have to do our parts to play a role. And I think my church has certainly been a leader in that area as well. Yes, we have a charter school, but we also are just trying to make sure that, you know, people who are looking to try to apply for a job, or that kid, as has been pointed out, that's just trying to do their homework, who has to have access to Internet, or whatever it is, it all plays a role. And I know that Rick Usher has come to our Small Business Committee many times and gave us a lot of updates about this, and I think that all of you should be applauded for the hard work that you continue to do. We've got a lot more work ahead of us to ensure that every citizen in our city has access to Internet. So, that's all I wanted to say, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reed. Thank you. Councilman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for leading the efforts on this important cause. And Ms. Bryant, Mr. Usher, I appreciate you being here. A few things I wanted to note, and we see the importance of this certainly throughout the entire city, but when you look at this swath from on the eastern part of the city, south of the river, including the eastern half of the 4th District, the 3rd District, and the 5th, we see significant concerns with connectivity. And there's one slide that wasn't here, but Mr. Usher was kind enough to talk to me the other day, and I'd ask you to talk about it now. And there was a slide relating to perceptions of Internet access or connectivity for persons between ages 18 and 24. And in the 3rd District, actually, or perhaps it is here, I just missed it, in the 3rd District, it was actually somewhat high, higher than what we see on the income-based level. Couldn't, we talked about this a bit yesterday, but could you talk about why, perhaps, it seems that a lot of folks who are younger and live in the 3rd District do feel they're connected, but why we may not be connected in enough ways that are helpful, either for studying, life, citizenship, et cetera?
Yes, Councilman, thank you. And the slide that we discussed isn't here. This slide is the one that shows by council district access at home by income level. And it's broken down, the graph on the left is for households making less than $30,000 a year, and on the right is households making more than $30,000 a year. And Kate Bender discussed, you know, these results from the survey with us, and really showed that it was this dollar level that had the biggest jumps in it. So, and as you can see, the 3rd District is showing it at 48%, 5th District at 52%, which, if you see the slides, corresponds with, you know, the FCC's findings as well. But the slide that, the piece in the survey that asked 16- to 24-year-olds whether they had Internet access at home, we believe that they're talking about access via mobile devices. So, through their broadband plan, through, I'm sorry, through their smartphone plan, their wireless plan. So, those students, those individuals, though, you're, that may be result, you know, suffering from data caps, maybe some bandwidth restrictions that you're not getting through higher-speed Internet at home. But we do know that in, say, 2013 or so, the majority communities' access to the Internet is primarily by wireless device, mobile device. So, we know that the future of the Internet and connectivity is mobile, and we're, that'll be one of our challenges in implementing this plan, is making sure that we're talking to our customers, in this case, those people that aren't online, from where they are. So, if that's the population that is most connected by mobile devices, then we need to look at what we're doing inside City Hall to make sure that we have mobile apps for more of our services, that we have, and our website already is mobile-friendly. But there's a difference between a mobile app and mobile-friendly. You can fill out a job application on a mobile app for a job application. You can't necessarily, you know, navigate a mobile-friendly website in the same purpose. So, those are the challenges that we see. But it is, I think, a high point of that survey, that if it is accurate, then that means that this younger generation, of course, sees the value of being online and being in the program.
So, and this is, I'm just learning about all this from you. So, we hear a lot about the digital divide, and I believe there is one, but that 18- to 24, and I wish we had this graph in front of us, suggests that at least as districts go and different groups go, they don't perceive themselves as different in terms of connectivity. And it seems as if the challenge isn't so much that a 19-year-old who lives on Benton isn't feeling connected. It's what they're doing on their phone with the device and that sort of thing, what type of app perhaps they're using, and how we can use that for a better educational opportunity. And so, I guess the question I'll have is, do you all have ideas? How do we, to sound like an old person or something, how do we get somebody to use that device for something helpful and useful for them? I think about my nephew, who lives in the eastern part of the 3rd District, who knows more about what's on his phone and all that sort of stuff than I do, but I don't think has ever looked up anything useful on his phone at all. So...
That's fair, I know. I look up sports scores, so it's, you know, it's, but how do we, as we talk about a digital divide and connectivity, particularly in the next generation, I feel like it's not the same as saying we're putting 20 computers in a room necessarily. Instead, it's suggesting with that mobile device, how do we get somebody to use it to engage with the city, with jobs, with school, et cetera? And how does this program help with that, or how can we?
Well, again, that's our challenge, I think, going forward. But, you know, from what I think we've seen, that it has to be engaging, it has to be intuitive to use, and it has to have, you know, ease of access. So, those are the challenges. And we've seen, like, UMKC uses a product called Blackboard for their educational programs, and I've witnessed people doing their homework assignments on Blackboard with a smartphone. So, it is a mobile-friendly, or actually, a mobile-app-type teaching tool. So, more of those kind of teaching, educational tools need to make their way into the school systems. And that's, maybe the digital divide is more on the side of the content providers, in this case, you know, teachers, instructors, and professors, rather than on the student side, because the student's going to be there thinking, there's an app for that, you know?
If I may address Councilman Reed's comment. One of the recommendations that we have in the plan is to do some asset mapping. One of the challenges is that we have a lot of different program offerings around the city, but either they're not accessible by foot for those that don't have access to transportation, or they're just not widely known. And so, one recommendation we have is to actually put a map together in hopes that we're able to piece together public access at either churches, or community centers, or at libraries, or at schools, so that people know where they can find access within a five-block radius of their home.
Thank you. Could I ask all of the members of the coalition to stand individually and give us your name and who you're affiliated with, please?
I'm Wendy Pearson. I'm the Digital Inclusion Fellow for Kansas City Public Library.
Hi, I'm Tom Esselman. I'm CEO of Connecting for Good.
I'm Kelsey Dorehanian, and I'm with Connecting for Good.
I'm O.C. Buck, and I'm also with Connecting for Good.
Thank you. Rachel Nolan?
Andrew Tarkowski, Verizon Wireless.
Thank you.
Rachel Merlo, Google Fiber.
Eko Lozo, Google Fiber.
Susan Norris, Echo Select.
Bob Bennett, City of Kansas City.
Bob Akers, Basil Action Network, East stewards.
We should have stood up quicker, sorry. Michael Robach, I'm representing the UMKC Coalition, I am at the law school.
Thank you.
Neil Gill, Charter Communications.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Teasdale, Literacy KC.
There you go, all right. Well, first of all, thank you all. The work that you're doing is absolutely vital to the vitality of the city. It has already shown results. The digital divide, although it still exists, is shrinking, thanks to your efforts up to this point. And we're certainly going to be as supportive, at least I am, I assume council will be as well, as supportive of your efforts as we possibly can, because it really is in the best interest of the citizens of the city for everybody to be connected in this day and age. If there are no other questions from council, then we'll close this segment out. And McLean and Rick, thank you. And I will say that although I show up from time to time and take a bow, the work is being done by people other than me, and I thank you for that very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next item of business that we have on the calendar is the annual business survey Everybody's probably familiar with our longstanding and valuable Citizen Satisfaction Survey that's been used to shape city priorities. This business survey is helpful from the standpoint that it is a parallel effort aimed at gathering feedback from our broad range of business and our business community on city services and the environment. Although it's newer than the Citizen Satisfaction Although it's newer than the citizen satisfaction survey by quite a few years, it does mark our sixth consecutive year of conducting the survey in partnership with the EDC, and there's some valuable trend information contained in it. Like the citizen satisfaction survey, we've seen a marked improvement over time in businesses' perception of Kansas City as a business environment. And the results of these surveys can help direct and support efforts to make Kansas City, to make Kansas City great again. I need a cap.
Jolly has one.
All right, so we have, so we have Kate Bender and Catherine Carter here, two young women who have been, I think, exemplary in their efforts in this regard, and in working through these types of issues. Certainly, you know a lot more about this than I'll ever know, and I appreciate your efforts, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Catherine Carter, City Planning and Development. I'm gonna start out and just kind of give an overview and some of the higher-level metrics, and then Kate will kind of dig into all of the robust analysis that they've done with this on, in the Performance Measurement Office. So as the mayor said, this is our sixth year that we've been doing the business survey. It started at the EDC, and about two years ago, we combined it with the Performance Measurement Office, and kind of revamped it a bit so that we could actually look at it with the citizen satisfaction survey, kind of see where some trends were going, to make it just more useful, and data that we could really turn into action, which is the whole point of doing these surveys. So, just kind of a quick overview of the methodology. We use a group called ETC. They're also the folks that do the citizen satisfaction survey. We've been doing, or administering this survey in October and November. That is just worth noting, as last year, 2015, October and November, you might remember, the city was very excited, there's, you know, some teams that were winning, whatnot, that made kind of a general kind of sense in the city of positivity, whereas in 2016, we saw just a bit of kind of maybe, I'll say, government fatigue with the elections. And so, where, you know, it's kind of worth noting that that may have some small bit of result in what the data we've seen. It's also worth noting that we did see a little dip in the citizen satisfaction survey that same quarter, so. Also, there's a 5 percent margin of error. This, when you see a change from year to year, if it's more than 5 percent, we think that it's kind of statistically significant, and, you know, worth noting that trend. If it's less, it could just be, you know, effect of kind of the random sample. So, some characteristics of the, of the business survey that are worth looking at are, over, you know, the majority of the businesses are over 21-years-old, so they've been in Kansas City for a long period of time, as well as they're primarily small businesses. As you can see, the majority of the businesses are under 25 employees. So this is one of those things where we obviously love the big wins, when we, you know, attract a big business here to Kansas City, but we should also keep in mind always that there are a lot of businesses, and the majority of our businesses, that have been in the city for a long time and are fairly small. In terms of the industries that we're looking at, we, this is the second year that we've been able to actually break up the data by our target industry, so that was an advanced KC study that we did to see which are those areas where we are, you know, uniquely competitive in the city. And so those are those seven right there. You'll see that this year, there is quite a lot of the supply chain management, which is actually really good news in terms of really using this data, because we've been doing with the EDC. There've been a lot of projects coming in at Center Point and Hunt Midwest. So this is a way that we can really use this data in a very pointed way, because we've seen a lot of input from, from that industry. Another thing that we started doing two years ago was trying to figure out a way to kind of break it up by geography. Again, whole point is to make this data something useful. So, we needed a minimum of 100 surveys per geographic location to make it statistically significant. You'll see that the West does have quite a bit more. This is a random sample, but basically, we just kept sending them out until we had a minimum of 100 in each area, so that's why the West has a bit more than the others, but it all kind of balances out, so we can split it up and actually get good data for each, for each area. As well, 44 percent of the respondents said that their personal residence was in Kansas City, Missouri. This is worth noting, because we do see a difference in some of the data in terms of importance of kind of specifically business issues versus more quality-of-life issues, which are things that we also ask on the business survey. So if you do not live in Kansas City, Missouri, you're less likely to have a strong opinion or any opinion on, you know, public schools, some of the city services, that kind of thing. This is something also that, it's stayed around 50 percent, but it is something that we want to keep monitoring, because, you know, the more likely your CEO lives in Kansas City, more likely your business will stay there. So, the big, the big metric, Kansas City is a place to do business, this has kind of evened out a bit. You notice that it's the exact same response for excellent or good last year and this year, as well if you keep, take into account average, we're at 93 percent feel that Kansas City is a good, excellent, or average place to do business. That's all stayed pretty consistent the last couple of years. Really, what we're trying to do now is kind of pick away at that average area, and see if we can move those into, into the good, the good range. All right, Kate Bender, Office of Performance Management in the City Manager's Office. And I'm gonna take it from here and dig into some more detailed areas of the survey. In particular, really spend some time on the quality of city services section, because I know that's something very much of importance to everyone here. But there's also some questions about workforce development that I think have some interesting results. And I should say, there are areas of the survey that we're not delving into today, having to do with business resources, business development. We've shared some of those with the EDC Board last week, and we'll be sharing even more of them with EDC staff, really getting down into the weeds on some of those issues, and as well, always happy to meet with other groups and share this data, and it's also available online. So first, looking at that Kansas City is a place to do business, obviously, the first, one of the first questions that comes to mind after, how's this trended over time, is how does this look when you break it up for different industries, different geographies? And I think the really positive thing is, when you look across the four geographies, it is very steady across the four. You see small differences there, but probably not statistically significant. The North region was actually higher than the others last year, and is this year a little bit, about the same as the others. So, not sure if we would really consider that a decline, or maybe it's sort of a, we call regression to the mean, it's, but it's, again, evening out with the others. When we break it down by those industry types that Catherine mentioned, there is some, more of a difference, more of a range there. Design and engineering had the highest rating of excellent and good, so all the way up to 89 percent. And supply chain management had the lowest rating. And we'll have some other data broken out by industry that I think ties back to this as well. The survey also asks what the most important reasons for locating a business in KCMO. There's a list of about 12 or 15 different reasons, so this just shows the top six. And businesses are asked to rate all of these issues as extremely important, very important, important, or not as important, I think. And so this is just the adding together extremely and varied, to try to get at the sense of what is really at the top of a business's list. And this top, this list of the top five or six, the percentages have shifted a little bit, but the, what's in that top five or six has really not changed very much over time. You see attitude of local business, local government, availability of telecommunications, utilities, and other infrastructure, low crime rate, I think those have definitely been in the top three or four over time. Level of taxation, availability of employees, image of the city, and so on down. And toward the bottom of the list, and the entire list is available in the report, as Catherine mentioned, you start to see some quality-of-life issues, parks, schools, housing, cultural amenities, and those tend to be further down the list, although, as Catherine mentioned, interestingly, when you look at whether the CEO lives in the city or not, those tend to go up a little bit in terms of importance. The survey asks businesses a number of questions about their general perceptions of the city and city government. These questions are intentionally very parallel with the overall questions we ask on the citizen survey. This year, we did see declines in satisfaction with three of these questions, and the rest were unchanged. And those three are marked with those orange triangles. But I would note that two of those, image of the city and overall feeling of safety, saw an uptick last year, and so their drop-down this year means that they're really just about even with where we were in 2014. So, over the two-year timeframe, unchanged. Quality of new development saw a really big increase last year, and so even with the decline this year, we're still up over 2014. So, again, as you look over a longer timeframe, I think not, not necessarily a reason to panic right now. And you'll see that citizen satisfaction, a little table over to the right, you'll see this on a couple of other slides. This is just an attempt to bring that in, so you have a point of reference. You can see that there is a striking similarity between a lot of the business satisfaction levels and citizen satisfaction levels for different questions. Same is true for city services. So, when I look at the results of the business survey, to me, it's very affirming for the citizen survey as well, to know that residents and businesses have very similar opinions about both satisfaction in different areas as well as priorities. The, there are a total of about 15 city services listed on the business survey. One thing I want to note is that unlike the citizen survey, which asks for general perceptions about city services, we do ask a few questions about whether you've used services, but on the whole, we're just trying to gather perception. The business survey asks first, has your business used the survey? And if so, what is, what's your level of satisfaction? And so because of that, there's differing levels of use, and as a service is used less, obviously, the, the number of businesses who are responding to that question gets smaller. So I divided these up into two slides. The first slide being, those city services that at least 40 percent of businesses, so, you know, approaching half, said that they'd use. So that's a pretty good chunk of businesses who've actually used this and are willing to rate it. And they're organized from most satisfied to least, and you can see that percent that used, and again, the citizen satisfaction. So, like citizen satisfaction, we see some of the higher, higher ratings for satisfaction being in public safety, fire inspection, police, crime safety response, airport services. And then you see, you know, some, in the middle, some business licensing and tax collection, water services, website usefulness, and then infrastructure toward the bottom, stormwater drainage, street maintenance. The second slide shows less frequently used city services, and again, used by a third or less of businesses, and you can see that last column has the percent that you used. Again, I would just caution with these, because less businesses use them, or reported they use them, less businesses rated them, and thus that sample size is small, and so it's just a little harder to rely on that percent satisfied as being, you know, being able to say, this is definitively the percentage. But still gives a good general sense. And again, you can see actually that the general ordering of satisfaction is pretty similar to the previous slide. Again, you see some public safety functions toward the top, and sort of some general inspection-type functions through the middle, and then at the bottom, sidewalk maintenance, again, an infrastructure issue. And again, I'd point you to citizen satisfaction, a lot of parallels there. Just one other, a couple other slides. There's so many different ways to look at the citizen, the city service data that I wanted to provide you with as much as possible, since I know it is important. This is the change over time, over a three-year period, and this is just for those more used services, because that is a larger sample size. And so you can see, of these, there were six service areas that have been unchanged over that time period, statistically, within a 5 percent margin of error, and, or up. And then there are three services to the right that have declined over that three-year time period. Finally, and this goes back again to that issue on the citizen survey, we ask about prioritization for improvement. On the business survey, the question's asked, you know, have you used this service? What's your level of satisfaction? And how important is it to your business? So we can look at kind of across those three different dimensions. And so when we see which ones they've ranked as very important versus not as important, the item, all of the service areas that are above that line are ones that were rated as being above-average importance for businesses, and the ones below are, comparatively below-average compared to the entire list. So again, this is, comes back to that issue of prioritization. If you look at everything that's below-average satisfaction, which, where are the areas that businesses might desire to see improvements first or investment first? And so I think that dark yellow square there probably is, highlights things that are both below-average satisfaction and below-average, or above-average importance. I mentioned that the survey does go into a lot of other detail about the business environment, including things that are really not just city service issues. And one that we wanted to call to attention, both for the EDC Board as well as you, because we thought it was kind of worth noting, is there are a number of questions about asking businesses to rate the workforce in Kansas City. And unfortunately, we saw declines in almost all of these questions this year. The previous year, we saw almost no changes to them, so 2014 to 2015. And certainly in our discussions last week with the EDC Board, it did come up that the economy has gotten stronger, and markets for workers have tightened, and so that certainly could be feeding into these perceptions. But again, greater than a 5 percent, in some cases, 7, 8 percent decline in many of these questions, and so didn't want it to go without note, that there may be something, something of note here, to kind of go beyond this, to say, okay, so if this is an issue, where is it an issue? We did look at it, look at the questions based on industry, and that also showed, I think, some pretty notable trends. Rather than it being sort of, appearing to be sort of an across-the-board issue, this is particularly for availability of workers, which we selected as being kind of a general, pretty easily, easy-to-find question, right? Can you find the workers that you're looking for? It's, appears to be some, there appears to be some real differences across industry sectors about their feelings about this. So, at the lower end, the big declines, far greater than the, across the board, was 9 percent decline. But you see supply chain management, health sciences, public admin, education, nonprofit, all having much more significant declines than that. And then several sectors being really fundamentally unchanged over the two years, and then arts potentially being up a little bit. So, we did these cross-tabulations for other questions as well, and actually saw very similar results. So, quality of workers in particular, these same sectors that are highlighted as being bigger declines at the top, showed declines for quality of workers as well.
I'm actually gonna jump in on that one. So, one of the things that I'll specifically point out, the supply chain management and the health sciences, these are areas and industries where there's a preponderance of the entry-level jobs, and also kind of a job path that, you know, where people can actually move up. And, you know, as we approach full employment, these are the areas where we do really want to make sure that we continue getting people into that pipeline. To that end, we're working with the EDC and the FEC to first start with some focus groups. One of the things that we do ask in this, at the last question in the survey, is if you would be willing to give your name and be, you know, interested in, you know, providing more information. If you don't, then it's a completely anonymous survey. But we've traditionally had about half, or sorry, a fourth of the, the survey respondents say that they would be interested, and I think this is one of those instances where it would be really helpful for us to potentially work on getting a program set up to really start pushing people, especially as a lot of the larger businesses that have come to Kansas City, with the help of the EDC, our supply chain management and distribution businesses. So we have, we'll have, continue having more jobs in these areas, and we need to start getting people into those pipelines.
Final slide on here is a question we've asked before, which is, in the next three years, is your organization planning to do, what are your plans, basically, in terms of expansion, contraction?
expansion, contraction, relocation? And so you can see that almost a third say that they plan to expand or increase employment in the next three years, and about a quarter say that they're going to expand in their current location. But about half say that they're not really planning any changes, and this is pretty similar to last year. We saw about a half say no changes, and about, between a quarter and a third say that they were increasing employment or expanding. And then you can see relocation numbers, again, relatively, relatively small percentage as well as closing or decreasing employment. When we look at this across geographies, there were some slight differences there. South businesses are more likely to be both expanding and increasing employment, and so that's actually a little bit of a shift. Last year, when we did the survey, it was north businesses that said that were more likely, so, but you can see the other three are relatively close together. That brings us to the end. Happy to take any questions. And we do also have Gary Sage here, staffer with the EDC, who I'm sure if you had questions specific to the EDC, would be happy to assist with those. We have put this presentation, as well as the full business survey report, on the city's website, kcmo.gov/survey, which is where the citizen survey results are as well.
Questions, Council? Councilman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the great information. Just a quick question based on your last slide, and I suspect if you had the answer, you would have put it up here, but on the increasing employment side, were you able to aggregate what that might look like as far as the companies that you were able to survey?
In terms of the number of employees?
Yeah, just to get an idea.
You know, that's a good, that, there is a secondary question on that to ask if, do you know how many? And I don't know that we have aggregated that, but I think that that's something we could certainly do and see if we can get a sense. It's hard because it, that type of open-ended question then becomes harder to still out to the broader, you know, beyond the sample.
Right.
But yeah, that would be interesting to see if they're talking a small proportion of their businesses or a larger expansion.
Well, and the reason I ask is it just goes to the point that we sometimes make about growing your own as opposed to going out and recruiting in, and the difficulty in doing that, or between the two. So, just an interesting, maybe factoid at this point, and maybe there's a public policy piece behind it, but that kind of information would be great to have, if that's possible. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Fowler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this. These are very enlightening, both last year's and this year's, is what the trends are. I think they're very helpful for us going forward. I do have some questions. One, I believe it's on your fifth slide, Kansas City is a place to do business by location, industry type, and it looks like, the reason I'm asking this is because it seems like, at least in my district, we're having a lot of increase in supply chain management types of businesses in Northland in general. And I wonder if, and it may be in the full report, but I wonder if there's any ideas to why that particular sector had a, only a 56% rating of Kansas City is a good, excellent place to do business.
I think that's one where we can look at kind of the last couple of slides that Kate was speaking to, the availability of workforce, the quality of workforce. These are issues that we've seen, especially with supply chain management specifically, a fairly significant decrease in satisfaction in those areas. So, at this point, without kind of actually speaking to the different, you know, organizations, just looking at, you know, just the survey data, that would be our best guess of why Kansas City is a place to do business has decreased specifically due to the workforce.
There was some discussion in EDC about the fact that as the, I think it was you that said it, as we get closer to full employment and supply chain jobs are relatively low-paying, people who have options are taking jobs that pay better, and supply chain people can't find people who want to take the jobs at their pay level, and makes it harder for them to do business.
Yeah, and I wonder if that wasn't the case, because I believe you did say that was a lower-paying jobs. So, I'd be really curious to see what that would look like in the long run. And then if you go to the one on perceptions of city and city government, my question there was, is there any breakout by area, north, south, east, and west, like you've done in others? Because I would bet that some of that would vary significantly, particularly education, by geographical area, and I don't know if that's the case or not.
Yeah, we can definitely break that out by, these questions by geography as well.
That'd be really interesting to see.
Some of it had to do with winning the World Series in '15 as well.
Well, yeah, you're probably right. Yeah, so, okay, well, that's why, oh, well, yeah. On the one importance versus satisfaction of city services, water services, of course, it was high importance and below-average satisfaction. I wonder if there's any relationship to that and our water bill? Yeah, maybe cost more, that leads to dissatisfaction, whether or not the services are actually good, because what I get out of my constituents is actually they're very happy with the service, the bill not so much, but the quality of services is much better than usual.
Yeah, and we've seen a decline on, so you can see, water services satisfaction's dropped by 10% over the last three, three years in the business survey. It's declined on the citizen survey, and water actually does their own customer survey as well, and it's, they've had declines as well. And so I think a strong factor in all of those is cost.
Okay. Thank you very much, but this is very good. Thank you.
Alvin Womack Hall?
Thank you. Thanks for the report. So, in the full report, I guess you list those 464 businesses. Do you name who they are, or is that private?
It's, it's an anonymous survey unless they kind of self-select at the end, but we don't make that public. Really, what we're asking for people who want to disclose their, their name is whether, you know, A, they want to potentially be a part of a focus group and kind of dig into some of this information further with us, or B, they would like someone from the EDC to contact them, they're having a question, an issue. So, the EDC is already working through, through that list and calling all of them, but we don't make it public.
Well, the reason I ask is, how do we know, based on those 464, which industry they're in? So are they making accurate assumptions when they're coloring in their bubbles, or however they actually make their report?
Yeah, they're actually, they're actually selecting, so the roll-up of the, of industries you're seeing is being done from, they're not being asked those categories, they're being asked a more precise set of industries, and then the roll-ups are done by the EDC based on, and I, my understanding of the listing of industries on there, it's very similar to NAICS codes, so there should be a level of accuracy there, but yeah, they're not necessarily selecting those sectors, they're selecting a more precise level of what, what business are you in, and then EDC is rolling those up into our, based on the information we've given them.
Right. So that, I guess I would question, how, how do they all know those things? So that's, that's my first question. The other one is, on the back, when it says, are you, in the next three years, is your organization planning to do anything? Something that I'm working on with some amazing people in the Northland and our city staff is hiring youth with disabilities. And we are working with a lot of companies, some starting out in the Northland, just because that's where we are, but finding out which businesses in Kansas City are hiring youth with disabilities who are 18 and over, and finding out how that's working in their businesses. And I guess I'd like to see if that would qualify for a category for you to go forward, because we are having a, you know, a large number of youth that are graduating from high school, and now we want to find useful and productive and meaningful employment for them. And the fact of the matter is, businesses are being awarded grants to do business in Kansas City based on the fact of the matter of whether they have hired, whether they're hired people with disabilities. And so a lot of times, they will be awarded a grant to do business because of that, and I think that that does help our economy, and it helps keep people employed. So I'd like to know more about what your thoughts are on how you're helping those, you know, targeting those businesses, making sure they're using youth with disabilities within their companies.
Yeah, and I don't have any specific, don't have any specific thoughts about that. I mean, I do think that's the exact type of resource for businesses that is great to be able to highlight and tailor that information to businesses who might not be aware of it, and that's another goal of the survey, is really to understand how much businesses are aware of the various resources out there and the various programs that can benefit them, and I think we still have a ways to go in terms of increasing awareness.
Well, I will volunteer to help bridge that gap if there's an opportunity to do that.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for this report and detailed information. It's always very helpful to have data when we're making decisions, and actually use the data when we make the decision. That's another important part that we need to always remember. But the, a couple of points on your, on page two, where we have, the majority of the respondents are really small businesses. I mean, the way I calculate it, by adding those first three categories, about 88% of the respondents are businesses of 50 employees or fewer. And that is where the growth in the economy will be moving forward. That's where it's at in Kansas City, that's where it's at in every city in the country. It's important to have our larger employers to provide those jobs, but the growth is in small businesses. So I think one of our challenges in the data you've collected is, on page eight, you, I think Councilman Wagner was touching on this, it's, I think, more efficient to help our existing businesses grow than to attract new businesses, because we're going to see fewer and fewer businesses moving. I think we went through a, a period of two or three years where we had a lot of movement nationwide within the metropolitan area. That slowed down. We need to continue to look for ways to support our small businesses, including streamlining our, right, continue to look at streamlining the process, cutting the red tape, things we've done the last four or five years very effectively, I think better than a lot of cities. The, and why it's important is, I want to go back to the satisfaction survey where businesses are not happy, and that is, street maintenance, or there's a higher emphasis on street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance. We've got a great example. This council's been a part of, the previous council, it's almost in an experiment in how infrastructure can help drive revenue, to provide more revenue for basic city services, and that's in the 135th Street corridor in Martin City. We have invested a few million dollars over the last few years because we were hearing constant complaints, they were having water main breaks three or four times a year, shutting down all the restaurants out there, creating havoc. Sidewalks were not there in a lot of the places, so there were ditches, basically. People, if you wanted to go from one side of the street to the other, down the street, you had to walk across ditches. If it was muddy, that just wasn't feasible. And then the streets were in pretty bad shape, so there were potholes, and they weren't well-done over time, and just old streets. Where we invested some dollars to fix the streets, to fix the water mains, to invest in sidewalks, partner with the businesses and their CID, which is Community Improvement District, they put in the amenities that we would not pay for, and the results have been pretty, I think, clear. When we make that investment in infrastructure, this one little area generates now $50 million in tax revenue for the city. That money goes all over the city, it can be used by all, for projects and sidewalks and fixing streets in other parts of the city. But we've seen, I think the other two statistics that are pretty telling are, the businesses around there have now invested, just recently, in the last year, another $12 million, because they felt good about the area, making that investment, that they were going to stay longer. And also, the revenue, it's nice having a CID, because we can measure the revenue of each of the businesses as an aggregate. Since 2013, when we started that work, the revenue has increased 20%. And so that's revenue to the city, tax revenue that we can use all over the city to address our basic city services. So, if we invest in infrastructure like we're being requested to do through the satisfaction survey, then we see results for the entire city, not just the area where we make that investment. So, this is really helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman McManus?
Just really briefly, I'll just jump, I was going to mention infrastructure, I'm glad Councilman Taylor already did. You know, this council's made that a top priority by passing the GOB, and I think it's potential to pick up on some of the lowest satisfaction scores, both citizen and now business, or have to do with infrastructure. So, it's helpful to see that, and identify that, and be reassured that that is a problem that, but it's a problem that we're trying to address. Just, my second point has to do with this, the four boxes on below-average satisfaction and above-average importance. You know, that helps us find out, what can we do to make the biggest impact? And we've talked about street maintenance and water services a little bit, which are in that box, and I think there is intuitive reasons why we'd think that those would be there. I noticed tax collections there, and I was just kind of curious what that, what that question looked like, because in the slide right above that, it actually shows tax collection is up 8% as far as, and I don't mean the revenue, I mean, as in satisfaction. People are 8% more satisfied with tax collection, which isn't intuitive to me, and so I'm wondering if that's more the process of it? Does it, does the question have to do with taxes or with the way we collect it? I'm just curious why people are more satisfied with taxes now.
Yeah, well, I don't know if I can speak on behalf of everyone for that, but yeah, I think the question is really what you see, which is tax collection, and I think you're right that it probably encapsulates both sides. So, to some extent, I, I think it is maybe inherently limited just by the word "tax", that you're not going to get overwhelming amount of satisfaction, but I think that uptick, and that's 8% over just one year, I, I think that probably has to do with a lot of the administrative improvements that have been made in the area of revenue collection over the last couple of years. There's certainly been huge efficiency gains. We also saw, I believe, at least, business licensing was a slight uptick, and actually a couple of years ago, the reason you only see a two-year trend for those is, those two were grouped together previously, as were street and sidewalk maintenance, and there was, last year, we decided, these are really, business licensing and tax collection are really two separate tracks, they're relate, both relate to revenue, both relate to administrative efforts, but they're very separate processes, and so divided them until you can see where they both, both came out. But yeah, I mean, I do, when I see the tax collection, I don't know that we're ever going to be reaching 80% satisfaction on tax collection.
Right. Well, that kind of gets to my question, which isn't really, I guess the point isn't that people are ever going to be happy about paying taxes, but it's providing a streamlined way, an easy way to do it. I think that's something that I know Councilman Wagner and Chair of Finance and our finance committee have been looking at, and are committed to making that process easier for people. And I think it goes with business licensing as well. I think if we can streamline the process for it, you know, their interaction with city government, at the point where they're least likely to be happy at least is, has some satisfaction, since it was, it was simple to get it done.
And one thing, I pulled up the slide before, so again, you can see why I wrote this out into a number of different ways, because sometimes the trend tells you something different than the importance, but part of the reason we put a column here on percent dissatisfied is sometimes that gives some additional context. So, satisfaction with tax collections at 53%, which may seem relatively low, but dissatisfaction is only at 16%, which I don't, is not something I would flag as extremely high. So you have, what you have there is a relatively high neutral. And so again, that may be people who, they're not happy they have to do it, it's not raising any red flags for them, they're not angry about it, they're just, it's taxes. So, I, I think that percent dissatisfied, you can see as you get into the couple of those infrastructure questions, that percent dissatisfied is going above 20%, 30%, which really is sort of a red flag, but people who are actively dissatisfied as opposed to just, it's fine.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Lucas?
Can I make a really quick point? On that importance versus satisfaction for city services slide, actually, before that point, I personally want to commend our city staff and finance department, because I think it has become easier to pay your taxes. As someone whose other employer does not take care of all that for me, I used to have to call and go through a lot of stuff, and it's just become far more efficient. So, thank you for getting our money faster, which is much easier to pay a tax bill on. One other thing I want to commend, when you look at our above-average satisfaction and above-average importance, we talk often about the expense for police, fire, some other services in Kansas City, but it does hearten me that businesses here recognize that they do a very good job. I actually had a fire in my backyard this morning, basically, and we had a quick, efficient response that I think was a helpful one. And so when we have a chance to talk about these, I think it is a very good idea to see what the city, what our citizens think we're doing well, and what our businesses think we're doing well. And it seems, at least where we're putting our money, folks seem to at least like what's going on. So, I just wanted to recognize that.
Anyone else? Anything else? Thank you all very much. Any last comments before you leave?
No.
All right, great. Can you take the next item?
Sure. The next item of business is our discussion of ordinances, resolutions, and communications on today's docket or floor introduction. Do we have any such item today? Councilman Lucas?
I'll just make a point of what I don't have today. Today, we are scheduled to talk about our final resolution in connection with our community development block grant fund. I know many of you have had the opportunity to talk to a number of different citizens' groups and others. I believe it is the sense of the council that we're, at least, I'm not planning to introduce a introduce a committee substitute that rearranges the funding. On the floor, I'll discuss a little bit about the process that we use to get to that funding award. I consider it to be a fair one, and so that's why we're proceeding with what the staff recommendations were. And just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that now.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman. Anything else? No? I don't believe we have any closed-session items.
We do not.
So unless you would like to, then I think with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.